Okay, we'd like to call to order the Town and Niskuna Planning and Zoning Commission's December 8th, 2025 meeting. Ms. Skoeddy, could you please?
Shoketty.
Ms. Shoketty, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflamme?
Here.
Ms. Strange?
Here.
Strange. Mr. Khan?
Here.
Ms. Belowski?
Here.
Mr. Billen Calhoun?
Here.
Ms. Gold?
Present.
Mr. Millsbaugh?
Here.
Chairperson Darpino?
Here.
Okay, next up is the approval of the November 17th, 2025 meeting minutes. Could I please get a motion?
Move to approve.
A move by Ms. Belowski, I will second. Are there any comments or corrections? Okay, I had one minor one on line 53. The word "present" is written twice, so it says "no representative present was present," should read "no representative was present." Okay. Any other comments or corrections? So, I'll put a motion to amend the minutes for line 53 to strike the word "present." Could I get a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Khan? And all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay. And all in favor of the amended November 17th, 2025 meeting minutes date by saying aye?
Aye.
I have to abstain, and if you could just take my name out of last, the last meeting, because I was not here for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, and one abstention. All right. So, the amended November 17th, 2025 meeting minutes are approved. Next up is public hearings. We have no public hearing, so we'll move on to privilege of the floor. Privilege of the floor is open to any resident Niskuna wishing to speak about any zoning or planning matter. Please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record. Looks like no one present is here for privilege of the floor. Turn it over to Ms. Robertson. Do we have any correspondents or anyone online?
Um, not since like 5:00 PM.
Okay.
I haven't been able to get my computer up and running, so I'll let you know if there's something else, I'll forward it to you.
Okay, that works. Okay. Seeing as that there is no one for privilege of the floor, we'll close the privilege of the floor and move on to unfinished business. There is none, so we'll start with new business. First up is Resolution 2025-32, a resolution for sketch plan approval for a major subdivision at 6 St. Gerard. Project lead is Ms. Gold.
Yes, I'd like to move the resolution.
Okay, I'll read it. Now therefore be it hereby resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission does hereby classify this sketch plan as a major subdivision as defined by Chapter 189 of the Code of the Town of Niskuna, and be it further resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission does hereby grant sketch plan approval for the concept subdivision, drawing and title Lot Line Adjustment between Lot 4, subdivision lands of Booth and lands of Luigi and Christine T. Leacy by Gilbert Van Gelder, Land Surveyor, P L L C, dated 9/29/25 with no subsequent revisions, with the following conditions. One, sketch plan approval is a conceptual review of the proposed lot division for the purposes of clarification and preliminary discussion as described in the Town of Niskuna zoning sections 189-6 and 189-22. The location of proposed boundary lines, infrastructure, utilities and improvements are subject to change during the environmental review, engineering, public hearing and subdivision review process. We have a motion by Ms. Gold. Could I get a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Khan? Okay, we'll open up to discussion. Representative from the applicants here?
Um, this is just a lot, lot adjustment to be able to.
Lou Leacy.
6 St. Gerard Drive, Niskuna. This is proposal, just to create another building lot on the site. The original site was 17 acres. We were able to get another portion of land from the lands of Postenelli, which made it a little bit larger, and we're seeking to take some of the property off my piece with the Postenelli piece to make one lot for one home. Pretty basic.
Okay. A couple of updates since the last meeting. A TDD has been secured by the town, so that letter of certification was in the, was in the packet as part of our thing. And I know that there was some discussion about locating a hydrant, a couple of other small things on.
Yes.
On there.
We met this week with planning and just the minute our topos are done.
Okay.
What else, Laura? I forgot what else we discussed. A lot of stuff about history of the site and how it all came about and. What's that?
Stormwater.
Stormwater, yeah.
Yeah, it was a big stormwater.
Right. So, we're doing a final stormwater study. Hopefully it gets done shortly.
Okay. Any other further discussion?
Ms. Les, who's your engineer for this?
I'm sorry?
Who is your engineer on this?
Luigi Pleschi.
All right. If there's no further discussion, please call the roll.
Mr. Laflamme?
Aye.
Ms. Strange?
Here. I'm sorry. Aye.
Mr. Khan?
Aye.
Ms. Belowski?
Aye.
Mr. Billen Calhoun?
Aye.
Ms. Gold?
Aye.
Chairperson Darpino?
Aye. Resolution passed. Congratulations. Thank you. Okay, next up is Resolution 2025-33, a resolution for site plan approval for the exterior facade and roof painting at Hannaford at 3333 Council Road. There is no project lead, so I'll read the resolution. Now therefore be it hereby resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission does hereby classify this application as a type 2 action under SECA regulations and no further action is required. Further resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission finds the above referenced site plan meets the requirements of the zoning code and therefore hereby approves this site plan with the following conditions. One, landscaping prior to the completion of the building permit, the health of the existing landscaping shall be reviewed by the tree council and property owner together, and any dead or dying vegetation will be replaced. I'll, I'll move to approve the resolution.
Second.
A second by Ms. Strange. Do we have a representative here for the applicant online?
Yeah, he's online.
Okay.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. My name is Rob Soss, retired bond, representing Barton's Foods of South Burlington and Hannaford Brothers Company. Like you said, the scope of work is very limited, focused entirely within the previous developed areas. Includes the facade updates for repainting some gray panels. We attached in a appendix D, I believe, exterior elevation of the building showing the existing proposed. So, it's very minor, replacing gray panels and the clock tower with the Hannaford brand standard colonial yellow, adding some rockwood dark red accent trim. And then separately to support the interior work, there are some electrical upgrades to the transformer on the east side of the building and then the generator on the north side. I can speak more to that if needed, but, um, you know, it's very minor in nature.
Were there also additional, was there also additional signage for the to-go that we noticed in the packet?
No additional signage, but yes, I did forget to speak on, at the existing Hannaford to-go drive aisle. We are including two new light components. They are dark sky compliant, just to help with safety and lighting for the staff and, and customers at Hannaford to-go during the nighttime hours.
So that.
But no new signage.
Is that signage currently there?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
So, the wall sconces are what you're talking about, right? You're just improving the amount of lighting?
Yeah, there's two new wall packs.
Wall packs, okay.
Yeah, we provided cut sheets in their application for that.
And so, is there, I feel like there is existing to-go signage now.
I mean, it looks like it's a banner, like a temporary.
Right. Not, so, so let's go to the elevation. Let's start with the elevation if you could, yeah. If you could, yeah, you can zoom in right there on that red door.
But it is a sign, I mean a permanent sign, it's supposed to be temporary right now.
So, the proposed elevation does not match the existing, but there's no proposed change in what that sign is at this time. It's still the Hannaford to-go with their tomato symbol.
Okay.
So, the proposed, this does not match what's currently there, is that what you just said?
Yes, the proposed elevation shows a Hannaford to-go not bound by a border. This was part of an effort some years ago when they installed the Hannaford to-go, and so what was installed was the sign that you see in the existing elevation, and that is not proposed to change.
Okay. So, the rectangular sign that's there is going to stay, but there's a small can light over the top of it. That's going to be replaced by the two fixtures you have in the packet, correct?
I believe that wall pack is going to stay to eliminate that exterior door, the egress door.
Okay.
And then centered in that drive aisle on the exterior of the building, there's going to be two symmetrical wall packs installed.
Okay. And approximately where would those be on this elevation?
Uh, in the two panels adjacent to the drop curve there. Where, uh, I don't know how to describe it, it's the two rectangular portions. I believe it's going to go one on either side of that.
The back of the building that has the concrete pad with the bollards, is that just a swap out of the, of the generator that's there?
Correct. It's, it's going to be increased in loading capabilities, but the footprint should remain the same.
I found in the packet it said that because of the change, the actual pad and bollards were going to have to change to accommodate the larger generator.
Right.
Let me double check. My apologies. I'm looking at the site plan now.
Yeah, the site plan's in the, would be the upper right corner of the drawing.
So, yeah, we're calling out the generator size to be determined. Overall footprint, it, it will not protrude into the drive aisle. And so, if it does get a little bigger, it's not going to increase significantly.
And that doesn't have any issues with trucks that would go around the back, loading, unloading, anything like that? Doesn't, doesn't change the radius of the turn?
No, no, I would say no. We, we've been doing these upgrades to many Hannafords, and that is one of the minimum requirements. We hold a 26-foot emergency access way for them.
Okay.
Sorry, just to clarify back to the front, the two light packs, so you're saying they're approximately where on the drawing again? And is it to benefit the team coming out? Or is it more improved lighting for the shopper pulling in?
I would say it's for the pedestrians, so that the vehicles coming in.
Okay.
Can also see them easier. Illuminating that walkway has been an issue for them, and so they wanted to make sure safety for lighting was taken.
Okay. And can you just clarify, sorry, where those two light packs are going to be positioned there then? In the middle?
Yeah, we're showing them on the, on the site plan. It, it's symmetrical within the Hannaford to-go aisle there. It's on either side of the Hannaford to-go, almost at the beginning and the end of that drive aisle. If you look at the appendix B site plan.
Yep.
So, so the summary of the, of the upgrades is exterior painting, roof, facade. It looks like we have a actually more appealing earth tone color scheme that, that works with a lot of what our town overlay goals are, so that's, that's good. Swap out of a generator on the backside of the building, which looks like it's an A to A swap. Electrical transformer upgrade and new bollards and some site paving. And then would be the two exterior light fixtures on the outside demarcating where the to-go and entry areas are.
Correct.
Correct summary of the four items?
Yep.
Okay. So, I would propose that we get the lighting so that it's shown on the elevations and the exact locations. Maybe we table this, I'm going to make a motion here shortly to table this, so that we can get all of these items captured onto that. And then, since these are relatively straightforward things and you've got most of this information in the packet, the turnaround for this could be relatively quickly. We have another meeting on December 22nd where we could actually take action on a resolution.
Okay, yeah, whatever the board is comfortable with. Like you said, it's an easy left for us. That's not a problem.
Yeah, Chairman, I agree with that, because actually on the site plan, it looks like those light packs are a distance away from the door.
I agree.
Right? We all agree there, right?
Right.
And, and, and it's not clear to me one thing. So, in appendix D, the existing elevation shows what can be, but looks like a temporary banner that says Hannaford to-go. Whereas the proposed elevation, and that's above the red door, right, that the employees come out of. And the proposed elevation is showing that as more a permanent sign, right, lettering on the building. So, is that an accurate depiction?
Yes. When, when the Hannaford did, Hannaford to-go did go in back in '24, I believe this was the exact same elevation we showed. I want to say that the light packs were also included in that, they just never got installed. I don't believe that we're proposing to install a new sign. I think the sign that's there is going to remain, but I can clarify that for the next.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, I heard you say that before, but I was just looking for a clarification. What, what I'm understanding you're saying is that the forever going forward sign above that red door will be looking like it looks today in the existing elevation picture.
I'll get clarification on that from Hannaford for sure.
Okay. Yeah, and the planning department can work with you too. If you have a previous application where any of the lettering or anything that was on the facade was already approved, and it maybe didn't get executed, it would just be good to note that, that it's part of this permanent package that's, that's being proposed at this point.
Yeah. Okay.
All right.
So, do you have to propose it?
Yeah, I'm going to just keep it open for discussion in case anyone else has. Uh, any other thoughts or comments from the, from the board? So, I'm going to propose that we table this resolution so that it gives the applicant the opportunity to upgrade and collectively show the four items that were, what were discussed, being the generator location, the transformer, electrical transformer bollards, the site lighting, and just confirmation on the signs along with the exterior painting palette that's been proposed. I'm going to get a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Strange? Okay. All in favor state by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So, Resolution 2025-33 is going to be tabled, and I'll give you the opportunity to collect some of that information and resubmit it back to the planning department.
Sure. Thank you guys for your time. As far as submission, when's the minimum deadline for submission, just so I can put it on my calendar?
Um, well, it's actually because it's only two-week turnaround, it's best if you can get it to us by Wednesday, but because it's a pretty simple thing, we would accept Friday.
Okay, I'll shoot for Wednesday, for sure.
Okay. I think most of what we're looking for right now is the signage confirmation and, and the lighting shown on the exterior. That's really the two pieces of information that, that really need to wrap that up.
Okay. Wonderful.
Okay, great. All right, and you're good with the condition on the landscaping as well for the spring?
Yeah, I talked to Clark Henry, we kind of understood that that was going to be discussed tonight, so we were aware of that. And whatever Hannaford needs to do to update, you know, the landscaping, that's fine. We'll work with the landlord on that.
Okay, great. That's pretty typical of a lot of our, our upgrades for tenants that are in a large plaza, so it's not something we don't normally ask.
Yep. Understood.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for your time.
Absolutely. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, that wraps up new business, so we'll move on to discussion items. First up is 1335 Balltown Road, an application for site plan review of a six-foot by eight-foot garbage dumpster enclosure. We have additional information in this package from the previous meeting. It includes actually an enlarged plan, revised garbage enclosure plan, which is now six feet by 12 feet. And also the additional information on pictures and landscaping that was also a request to, from the previous meeting. We do not have a project lead on this, so I will lead the discussion. Do we have somebody here?
The applicant isn't here.
Applicant is not here, okay.
Uh, they might be joining momentarily, I just got a quick note, just sharing.
Okay.
This is to serve that, what is it called? The wiggles and giggles daycare there?
Yeah, the owner of that plaza.
The owner of the plaza, right?
So, I think, I think a couple of things have been addressed. The first one is the landscaping plan looks like it's pretty substantial as far as what they're proposing. You know, a, a boundary that is an arc behind the garbage enclosure on the backside of the parking lot. There's a couple of existing trees that they're working around, and then it looks like four different types of plants, varieties of plants that they would be planting around there, some of which would be, you know, year-round green vegetation that would help, help shade it. The, the location didn't change as far as where they were proposing, as far as what that buffer is, so it would be coming in all the way to the backside of the parking lot and wood, wood fence enclosure too, so remain the same material.
And just for review, just explain then, given the location, the proposed, I know the applicant's not here, but the proposed, uh, garbage removal route.
Yeah, yeah, is the truck going to go down that Buxton Street and?
It can't get through now, right?
Yeah, you can't go through, and I think we recommended that we even put a condition that it can't be picked up from the Buxton Street side. Yeah.
But, so it'll have to come from.
Parking lot.
Across the parking lot.
The parking lot?
So, if there's cars parked there.
Yeah, that, um, I don't know that we talked to him about. I noticed that on there too. I mean, there's actually not that many cars that park there regularly, but I suppose there could be one. Yeah, so, I don't know if we dimensioned it, if there's room to move it to the south just a little bit so it doesn't conflict with that parking space. Because the other, the other thing is, and hopefully he does pop on, is that, you know, that adjacent neighbor still thinks that that size isn't big enough, and if he's going to be pouring the concrete, maybe might as well.
Yeah, I mean.
Make it a little bigger and then put it in a place that it doesn't conflict with the parking spots.
I mean, that, the building next door that has access from Buxton Street is a completely different property, right? So, so it has to be, and I'm actually looking at the Google map view. It's got to be on that parking lot side, but it's really, uh, it's really a tight area there.
Compared to where it is, I agree.
The site plan drawing is really clean, but the actual Google map image is a little congested, shows a little congestion.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely tight in that back part of the parking lot. I guess if the applicant could answer a question like, on trash pickup day, would they be wheeling bins out? I know they've got a larger.
Like here.
Correct. So, you have a larger, so right now they're showing, you know, probably four of the tubs that they have, typical residential ones there to the right-hand side, and then they've got a larger, maybe like a four-yard dumpster that's on wheels that would probably also have to be wheeled out. Either way, they'd have to come out of that pen in order to be picked up. So, if it's, you know, like some of the, some of the refuse companies that come through here, they sideload when they dump.
That's what I'm thinking about.
And then the dumpster companies that have the, the other ones sometimes usually pick up from the front and tip.
Yes, I think this tree and this tree are both on the site plan. So, he's talking about putting it like right in between both of these.
I'm curious if the applicant has actually talked with the hauler to see what the hauler thinks of this.
And Laura, we don't, as a town, we don't regulate the when of pickup. I know, I know living close to Balltown, I can hear that it's early. For people on Balltown, it comes early to avoid traffic, but.
It can't go earlier than 6:00 AM. We do regulate, um.
A limit.
Super early or, or in the middle of the night, there's nothing to do. Yeah. But other than that, generally speaking, no. I think as long as it's between 6:00 AM and, can't remember what the other one is.
So, potentially a hauler could be coming in the middle of the day when, or could be arrive, I mean, they'd probably decide not to, but I mean, in the middle of drop-off and pickup of a daycare center.
Yeah, it could.
Laura, and, and the board, I just got a note from the applicant. He's maybe a minute or two away, he has to park. I don't know, you want to skip? Maybe he'll have the answers to some of the questions. He did say he's on his way. Just running late.
All right, well, we'll give the applicant a few minutes. We'll table this one and move on to the next one. And then we'll go through, we'll go through all the discussion items. If he does arrive, then we'll revisit at the end. If not, we'll table this till the next meeting. Okay? So, moving on to 2837 Akrook Road, this is Rivers Ledge. This is an application for signs at Rivers Ledge, and the project lead is Ms. Gold.
Yes, the applicant did give us a, a drawing of what it would be if it were on the horizontal like most signs are.
Okay.
And it's large. Part of it is that there's a little swoopy thing following the actual name. Minus that, it wouldn't be so large, definitely easier to read. The applicant had said something about having some material about the readability of what is currently there, the vertical with the letters turned at a right angle to the norm. I didn't see any of that come in the packet.
Yeah, he's still working on it. He did say that there was, you know, they had had a traffic discussion and that he's going to try and get that and send it to us, but we haven't received it yet.
I did a little research, and one thing that popped up right away was that they believe writing at the right angle like that would be a difficulty for people who are dyslexic, that they would have a hard time processing it. I know from talking with a couple of people that, um, older folks tend to find it difficult. So, I'm, I can live with the height, I have no problem with the lighting, but I'm concerned about the lettering itself. That it should be just vertical, because we have that all the time, and it's fairly easy to adjust to. But the first time I saw one of the signs, I never even noticed the second sign because my brain was still trying to figure out what I'd just seen. We don't read that way. In our culture, we generally read horizontal, not vertical. We normally read left to right. Some of us also read right to left, but this is not a norm, and I'm concerned that it's very distracting.
And, and just to be clear, I, I think I did cut up, these, these signs are there, right?
Yeah, the pylon signs are there.
The entry point to the whole discussion several meetings ago.
Correct. The real sorry sign is not there, it's proposed.
Though I have to say, in the discussion, which was not brought up by the applicant, there was reference to the fact that this particular sign and dimension is less obstructive in terms of seeing ongoing traffic, which I had not really considered compared to a broad horizontal sign. And because of the pace of traffic that you're turning into on River Road, I actually could see, um, an argument being made for it being an increase in visibility or an improved, I guess, visibility, given its location.
For, for the record, in, in terms of what's considered norm, maybe not in Niskuna, but in other adjacent, uh, markets and towns, cities, this is actually normal for signage. Laid signs on the sides of buildings, they tend, they, it's just been a, a common thing. And if you, Schenectady as an example, State Street near Proctors, I'd say 50% of the signs have letters like this, or, or a good percentage of them. I can't say exactly how many, but it was significant. I drove through just to, just to see if there were examples of other similar signs, and there, there are.
But that doesn't address whether or not that angle for the lettering is a distraction to people and that it slows. slows them from actually being able to read the sign, or in some cases maybe misreading it entirely. And that's my concern.
Good point. I just wanted to comment on the nor, you mentioned it's not normal. It's not the norm, and I don't know if that's correct.
I'd like to say that I, I, I'm gonna hang on to my previous opinion, um, in that I don't approve. I don't care for the height. I don't care for the size, and they could have done just the same with a horizontal sign, excuse me, and, um, and I'm still not happy that it's erected.
And, and so just to weigh in on that, like, you know, like I said, I haven't, number one thing for, there are several things, but the number one thing for me is actually the size. So even if it were vertically oriented, letters reading the way it's written, it's sixteen feet, four inches. I can understand your argument about blocking traffic, but th- th- this is not them. I'm disappointed that this is a physically installed sign.
I am too.
And this isn't a commercial area, really. It's more residential. It's got a country flavor to it still. And comparing it with downtown Schenectady doesn't really do much for me. I'm worried about people being able to read it, especially if they're actually looking for it.
It sounds like we don't have precedences with, uh, Missuna Gardens, Talloks, right, Hillside Village. There's tons of places where people live that have signs.
I agree they need signage.
No, I agree they need signage too.
This particular sign, I find very problematic. I'm drawing on things I learned in my biology and psychology classwork.
Okay, so I think, I think some of the takeaways from this is that the applicant, I did discuss at the last meeting about taking the vertical signage and showing a drawing with the, with the letters vertically stacked. Uh, we should probably give them the opportunity to do that if that's a path that they want to do. Um, they did provide the one that is horizontal, and if the location of that um, could be shown on a, on a plan very similar to where the current signs are now, um, just like they did with the other, the other signs that are proposed for, we'll call it sign number two, um, for the real sorry sign, that we should review all of those options together and then, then try to bet this out for the, for the applicant.
Well, I think if we're gonna do that, then it should also, uh, include Genghis's concern that, of, of the size, right? Because if we're asking them to actually swap out the panel to show it lettered in a horizontal fashion, it doesn't need to be sixteen feet, right? So we could also ask that it be shown at eight or something smaller. That's not so huge comparatively.
Well, the, I think part of this is that, and the applicant's probably gonna review this meeting, is that they're getting mixed reviews from the board on what's gonna be acceptable.
Mm-hmm.
So I think part of that, you know, the applicant should go back and take a look at what options are on there. You know, they did discuss going, going through some, some people are not opposed to a vertical sign. It is different than what we've seen kind of collectively throughout town. I don't know if that's necessarily gonna set a precedent. PUDs are a little bit different. Um, but we now have another one, you know, potentially being developed next to it. So there, you know, there's going to be a typology that's along that river uh, that, that we're gonna be looking at here for, for some years to come.
And they are subject to their own zoning, but it's still, I think, a precedent-setting concern that a lot of us have too, that you can just build it and then deal with it on the, the other side.
I don't mean to revisit this if it was, but, so we had worked very closely with this applicant from like day one. Do we have any idea what their argument is for how these signs got installed without anything coming?
No, I mean, um, Mr. Louiezy is the son of Peter Louiezy.
Okay, I recognize the different.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And he said he wasn't involved in the installation. So, I mean, they've apologized for it a couple of times, but no, we don't really know why it went up without a permit.
I mean, do we even know their reasoning for?
Well, I mean, what he kinda said at the meeting was they thought they did everything right and they weren't even necessarily aware that the sign company hadn't taken a permit out. Um, I don't know that they've really had a great, I mean, I mean.
It seems unlikely that the sign company would have proceeded without a go-ahead.
Oh, yeah. No, of course they would not have.
And you would also think that a professional sign company would know to at least check if they needed permission from the municipality. So.
Well, we've seen projects come through from action signs. That's not a completely unknown sign company to us.
Right.
But, um, yeah.
I, I, I didn't.
I mean, there may have been a breakdown in communication.
I didn't intend to ask that to go backwards in the past, because we can't. I was coming from the perspective of is one possible option for the future here to just say, you know what, if we just started from scratch and let's negotiate what the right kind of sign thing could look like. Rather than just optionality, this one, that one. Right, let's just, I mean, we're willing, we'd work with this group. If we could have an offline meeting, I'm not speaking to Ms. Gold, but, right, and just come up with something that we know will be agreeable to the board. And then whatever happens, happens. If you have to tear signs down and all that, well, okay.
They did say for future signs, they would come to town first.
Well, they've certainly worked on other projects in the area. I think they know, excuse me, they know, you know how to play the game. So I, I, I struggle with it just being there.
Yeah.
Not inexpensive signage. You would think everybody would make sure all the i's are dotted and the t's crossed.
The weird thing is, they are so good to work with, like.
They build a beef.
Laura and I really enjoy working with them. They usually do permits, yeah, cross their i's and, or cross their t's and dot their i's. They usually, they went over and above on the recent tree council meeting with the landscaping. I mean, they're just really, uh, good company. It's just very surprising to me. I don't know why they put the sign up without a.
Okay. Um, and then one of the other takeaways from the last discussion was just having them clean up a lot of the temporary signs that are on site. There's the wood,
Mm-hmm.
four-by-eight signs. They've got the, um, I guess, um, the rental banner, uh, flags that are up too. So that was another, another condition that will be put on to whatever the ultimate, uh, final resolution is on this.
Mm-hmm.
So the takeaway from this is, let's, let's give the applicant, uh, another option to either explore a couple of things that we talked about at previous meetings, see which direction they wanna go with, with, we'll call sign number one for the, you know, for the demarcation signs that are along the road. And then we'll, we'll see where they land, uh, the next meeting or so.
Yeah, and I mean, per Genghis's comment, I can also ask like, hey, what would a sign look like if we were starting from scratch and just working on it?
Okay. I, I guess a technical, like a technical enforcement question. If this current signage is not in compliance, is there any reason that the town would tell them that it cannot be lit or can, has to be covered or something? They have non-com, what, I mean, right now, currently, they have non-compliant signage, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, the lighting of the signage is not typically an issue. All of the, so like what we did to compare this sign, we compared it with the R three multifamily complexes signage and I think a residential zoning district. But essentially, like, the PUD zoning district doesn't have sign regulations. So, but in our typical, um, in our typical R three zoning districts, those signs are bad.
Okay.
So lighting wouldn't be an issue.
And I would hate to remove the lighting at this point, because that's a tough stretch of road.
Yeah, and I think what we found is although our, our lighting used to encourage, um, external lighting shining on the signs, that that is actually more disruptive to traffic and um, neighborhoods actually than the internal soft lighting that we've been approving at like GE in places. Um, the external light bulbs can get hit and misdirected and blind you when you're driving by a pocket night and it's dark. So, um, I think our code may need some updating on lighting, because I think the internal lighting is definitely the way to go.
Laura, I may have missed this, and I don't know that that's been addressed, but the residents right across the street, have they expressed any issue with?
We've not, not got a single complaint. It's.
Interesting, okay.
It was noticed, I mean, honestly, I live there. I didn't even notice the signs going up. It was noticed by a building inspector in a site plan, uh, in a, in a building inspection vis- visit, uh, which they call for regularly and we do all the time. Um, and then we just took it from there.
I get, the only concern I have in what I was leading, my question was leading about enforcement was, so we have, we have another meeting in December, then we get into January. And not that this applicant hasn't been great to work with, but if it begins to slide for several months, then it becomes commonplace. It's still there. We're talking about it in the spring. I, I'd like to get some sort of direction, at least by the January meeting, if possible, with the applicant to say, listen, like, you know, we've been looking at this for a couple of months. We understand how it came forth to the board, but not to just let this exist because of deference.
I agree. The board, I don't think should really take it off its agenda until a conclusion is reached and then we'll enforce.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, that's fair then. We can at least track it through discussion items and make sure the applicant's being responsive between meetings. Okay.
It could be the neighbors across the street actually welcome the lighting, because that, that's a nasty road to drive in the dark. And so much of it is dark.
It's a very dark road.
And, you know, I've been driving it since I was, what, eighteen?
Yeah, it's a dark road.
Okay. All right, well, we'll have the applicant filled in with, uh, some of our discussion items tonight and see what they come back with. Okay, uh, next up on discussion items is three ninety-eight, three sixty Anthony Street, J-Dog Junk Removal, an application for a lot line adjustment. Come on up.
Okay. Hello, how's everybody doing?
How are you?
Good. Um, so we bought this place.
Uh, just name an address for the record.
Oh, sorry, Ray Gagnon, one sixteen Charlton Road, Boston Lake, New York. Um, so we bought this property in two thousand and eighteen, and apparently when we bought it, it had a light, uh, what's it called? What do you call it? Lot line? Lot line adjustment already approved. We didn't know anything about it. Um, our lawyer missed it when, on the sale. And our building encroaches on the other one, uh, and where we wanna get that fixed. What's that, babe? Right. Our, our building, which is on three ninety-eight, encroaches on three sixty. Um, and, and apparently it's been through the process before we owned it. And then, um, for some reason it wasn't, the deeds weren't changed or whatever happened. And, um, you know, we, we discovered it and it's like, we gotta get this thing fixed. So we reapplied.
Okay.
And my email chain says that three sixty defaulted on their taxes, so the county wouldn't let them record the lot line adjustment.
Yeah, from what I understand, that's the previous owner.
No, that's what I mean, yeah. And you guys have worked everything out with three sixty and just handed in the notarized application.
Yeah, he's fine.
So, that should be fine, but it's a new owner. I think the, it actually received the variances that it needed. It received the planning board approval. It even had everything signed and it got brought down to Schenectady County and the county rejected it because of the outstanding taxes.
Okay, I was gonna ask how we missed it.
It went into foreclosure, so there was no one to ever fix it or sign it. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and we bought the property. Our lawyer didn't catch that that was, wasn't taken care of. So we bought it as, as it was.
So, uh, Laura, is this straightforward enough that we could put this together as a resolution for the next meeting with the backup information that we have currently in this package?
Um, it's up to you. Your resolution would have to defer to, or be conditioned on a, another, a sec, a, a second variance being granted by the zoning board.
Okay.
Um, but if you, we did do that on another application, maybe GE.
Yeah, it's not typical that we've, we've done that. So I would say that maybe because of this, we could then work it up so that we have the resolution prepared for the ZBA ref- referral. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we can do a referral.
The referral, the ZBA referral for the next meeting, so that we could then get them onto the ZBA docket for January and then come back and we get the resolution here for the lot line adjustment.
Yeah, end of January resolution.
Yeah.
So they go to CBA in January?
Mm-hmm, I couldn't get them on the December meeting.
I wasn't sure, like, if you, if you've already had a previous action on something, if it would, this becomes a new application, correct? Mr. Hess?
Yeah, so what happens is if you have either an approval and it's not acted on, it expires. So it's evidence that you have merit to your request, but it's not binding. The board has to act on it again.
Okay. Even though one of the parties was involved in the previous?
Yeah, because it, you know, so what's unfortunate here is, so there's a good reason that the county wouldn't record the, the lot line adjustment, uh, both plan and deeds with open taxes. That's how they enforcement mechanism they use to make sure that stuff gets paid. Um, so that wasn't a new rule for this transaction. That's always the rule. Um, but yeah, so during that, at some point then, um, because the property was in foreclosure, it just expired. So.
All right, good. Okay, so that's basic outline of
Okay.
where we're gonna go with this. Uh, since this is a ZBA referral, it'd be good to have a project lead on this, so we could work up the conditions for, for the next meeting. And if anyone's interested, let myself or planning department know.
So do you need us here for the next meeting?
Um, we, yeah, so the, I believe the next meeting, what we're going to do is we're going to work up a referral to the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
Three questions that we, we vet out here at the board. We make that recommendation. We vote on it here. It goes to the ZBA. They review it. If they grant it, then you come back to us and then we, we move forward with the lot line adjustment.
Gotcha. So, and you're saying that'll be in probably January?
I think ZBA meets once a month, so you would, you would be at the, at the January meeting.
Gotcha. Obviously, my wife has questions.
If we take action, uh, at the next meeting.
So.
This is Robin, by the way.
Okay.
Robin Gagnon, same address for now. No, I'm just kidding. So.
Could you step forward just a little closer so we catch on that?
So if I'm looking at like a timeframe, would my timeframe be sometime in February? If every, but if everybody agrees, because I, we have the previous and the new owners of three sixty have paid all their taxes. So I don't, it's not gonna get caught this time. We've made sure of everything.
So the, the, the quickest it would go would be, we would make a, we would make a referral at our next meeting on the twenty-second of December. You'd be on the agenda for ZBA in January. If they take action and approve it, it would come back to us. And then we have a meeting at the end of January.
Okay.
Um, but we also have one in the beginning of February as well. So February ninth might be the latest. So it depends on.
Okay, I was thinking summer or summer. No.
Oh, no, 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 I don't, well.
Hopefully.
Depends. There's, there's boards that have to go through. They have to take a look at, something might come up through this process.
Okay.
But the most accelerated timeline would probably be January, February, that you would have all the action items from the boards that, that you would have to go through here.
Okay, well, thank you.
And of course, the planning department will, will help you out with anything.
Yeah.
And they'll help you out with the deadlines when, when you're, uh, you get through each board. They'll let you know when the application deadlines are for the forthcoming meetings. There is a ten-day period that we have to have all our information in. So a lot of your information is in the packet right now, but the information that comes to the ZBA is also something we have to see in order to make a decision.
Gotcha.
Fantastic.
Okay.
All right.
My only question is, do we need to be here on the twenty-second to answer any questions y'all might have, or?
Well, we always recommend, even if you don't come, that you send a representative. Yeah.
Is that affecting some plan you have, holidays or something else?
On the twenty-second, no?
No.
We're here.
Virtual auction?
Yeah, yeah, you can always come hybrid too if you're.
Wanna be online.
Yeah.
Oh, on the internet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, um, moving back on discussion items, uh, thirteen thirty-five Balltown Road, application for site plan review of a six-foot by eight-foot garbage dumpster. Hello, how are you?
I apologize that I was late. How do you participate through the internet? I, or maybe you can tell me later.
Oh, yeah, it's just a Google meet link.
All right, okay. I tried, but, all right. So did you have any questions regarding you requested additional information? Laura, I don't, so we did a landscape plan. That's what you had asked for.
Mm-hmm.
How was the garbage truck?
Larger, so we made it larger.
Okay.
Um, yeah, there we go.
How is the garbage truck gonna get to it?
Uh, it's a large lot. They're gonna back up to it the same way. And we're gonna have a, a, a thing that has wheels. So I own a, a number of other properties and some of them do have these dumpsters. So it's gonna be a three or four yarder that's on wheels. So you just kinda pull it out of the gate, but the gate is gonna open as well. But.
So do you pull it out or the hauler?
We'll probably pull it out. The, the problem is they can, similar to the other ones that I'm sure in this unit, they can back up and just lift it out. It's gonna be open at the top. But in my experience, that's probably how the gates will get damaged, that kind of thing.
And so if there's a car parked in that spot. And so, if there's a car parked in that spot, right next to where it proposed?
Uh, Diane sometimes parks there. Uh, we can block, Diane is, you know, with our world Montessori, but if you want us to eliminate that parking space, we can.
We'd have to check and make sure that you're not at your minimum, but we could run that calculation. Is there any way to move it?
Yeah, it's not really going to, if you, I, I took some existing photos, there's one that, um, is from a distance, Laura, I think you'll see. We could always push it a little bit to the left, yeah.
If you could come back to the microphone, it'll help us capture just the dialogue that we-
I apologize.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's the, that's the image, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if you prefer, I can just push the enclosure to the left. Oh, how would I?
You can just walk with that one. Use that, use that.
Ah, got it, there we go, sorry. Um, yeah, we can put it over in this area. The problem was, I was gonna put it right between the trees. I, I'll put it, I thought we had kind of agreed on this location, but I'm fine moving it again, if that's, the problem with the location that we first proposed is Verizon Scott lines underground, and they won't kind of tell me whether they're active or not.
Yeah, I think the concern is, obviously, you're going from sort of close to the road to having to traverse the whole parking lot to get to your garbage, and so that we were just wondering what the proposed plan was, so that it, you know, in the event that they show up at, you know, nine AM while people are dropping off at Montessori, like, you know, is there sufficient room for all of that to happen?
Yeah, they won't be, we can't allow them to show up at nine AM, they're gonna show up at six AM.
Okay.
So, we'll put it out the night before, you know, outside the gate.
Okay.
You know? Um, yeah, that's what we do at a couple of other buildings. So, we would be able to get it out without that car, you know, being that car blocking the, the gates. Again, I made it larger, the, the roll-off will be on the left-hand side of that diagram. If you go to the diagram, you'll see. I think it actually made sense. Now, see, I tried to get, um, Wiggles and Giggles and our world Montessori to just use one roll-off and have it picked up, but they're not always communicating effectively. Now, our world Montessori's lease is up next August, and if some of you, I think we're here when we, our plan is to hopefully come in to do co-working at that location, and when that occurs, I think we're just gonna have one four-yard roll-off, you know, but we can keep other stuff there. But my plan, the other thing is, probably the main container will be garbage, and then there'll be a couple of those large recycling containers to the right. So, I think this design makes more sense.
Okay. And then, can you just-
I thought, 'cause, that it was gonna make people happier, that it was farther, like, less visible from the garage.
Right, and then we just have to, right, consider the Buxton.
It's less visible from Alton and visible from Balltown now, right?
Correct.
Balltown and Buxton.
And then just explain the timeframe, because obviously we're in the winter, once this is approved, I'm, the garbage, are you waiting until the spring, or will the, the enclosure be built before the landscaping is planted? Just curious what the timeframe is.
I, I have been meeting, we could have, um, I have guys that work for me full-time, so we could have dug and set those posts. Again, I think it was the right decision not to try to set them without finalizing the design. I am now talking to another contractor to see if we rent, like, a boring thing, uh, whether we can get through the ground. So, my intention is not to wait for the spring, but they've gotta be set in concrete for this thing. Now, I could put something up temporarily, if that's what you folks would like, you know what I mean? And it'll, it'll look good and it'll function, but, you know, I'm gonna have to anchor it kind of temporarily and then do something different in the spring, so.
So, I think as far as a temporary enclosure, that's not something that we want to entertain currently, whatever your garbage collection is, this is definitely gonna be moving in the right direction. Uh, when this does get approved, obviously, at some point this winter, your contractor can decide if they wanna fight through whatever ground frost is there, there's ways and means to do that, it's all, I work in construction, so there's definitely ways you can do it. Um, you know, picking some mild days or something, getting the right concrete mix, that stuff can be done in the winter. So, if that's, if that's the intent, I think that's, that's great, it's a benefit. Obviously, the plannings will be in the spring, and even if this does get tabled until the spring, I think as far as whatever the enclosure is, it's definitely gonna be an improvement from currently what's there, 'cause I've driven by a few times, there's, you know, bins are kinda scattered on the back area, sometimes near the building, sometimes they're in that bend in the parking lot, so wherever, wherever that can be consolidated will be probably beneficial.
I agree.
So, I think between the two trees with the symmetrical landscaping is probably quite nice. Um, Clark and I will look and see if there's a way, if there's any wiggle room to hash out, uh, parking space-
Yeah.
-to give that dumpster. I mean, I don't know how you guys feel about it, but, like, 'cause the, the existing trees are ki, and if you put it right in the middle and then you did, I don't know, it's probably nice.
I, again, think if you let me build it and you come and see it, it's not gonna be blocked by that car in that spot, but again, I'll do whatever you want.
Where was the original place you proposed it to be?
If you go, it, there's a spot-
At the bend, right there, right?
You originally had it at the bend, right?
Right here.
Oh, the original site plan, it's back here, that's the original spot.
Correct.
Right here, kind of where you see everything now.
Yeah.
But if you go there, there's a big Verizon-
Yeah.
-thing, and, um, and frankly, that's where we prefer it, but it's, try, I have Verizon lines attached to the back of the building, I have on every boulevard, and it is two years now of just trying to get them to do what legally, but you cannot, so, it's really problematic, but, um, so it just seemed like that was the easier thing, was to just move it to the other part of the lot.
So, there's a Verizon box in the ground now, currently, on that lot?
There's a Verizon hub-
Mm-hmm.
-that's rising out of the ground.
Okay.
We call the, you know, site utilities thing.
Called eight-one-one, right?
Right.
Big safe?
And they came out, so there's no gas lines, but they're, they said there's Verizon, we call Verizon, so we called Verizon, and they said, we don't, we don't think those are active, but we don't know, and if you cut through them, you're gonna be liable, so.
Sounds like Verizon.
Yeah.
So, are these parking spaces currently, um, is this parking space in front of that dumpster area currently hashlined like that?
We just, we literally just striped the lot, like, two months ago, and I think this was maybe already in the queue, so I've gotta be honest, I don't know.
Because, like, if that one was hashmarked, and obviously, it could be a very nice working parking space, and then you just hashmarked down here, you're not losing a parking space, right?
If that one were not hash, if the, the one you're pointing to were not hashmarked.
Yeah, so this, when we're doing parking calculations, it wouldn't count as a parking space, right? And if, and if you haven't hashed it, then we can just count that as a parking space.
I thought about putting it on the lot as well, like, putting it on the asphalt, but I didn't think visually that would have been. And plus, again, at the larger size, we're gonna lose two spaces if we keep it in the original location.
Okay, 'cause then you could hashtag this spot, and it would just give them a little more room to come in this way, right?
I'm, I'm sorry, again.
Yeah.
I find it a little odd that, did the board find the original location was a little bit more sensible?
Um, the original location, I put the resolution in here, it's interesting, um, they just made sure that it was enclosed at nineteen ninety-four.
I mean, I do think that bend is where it's a more reasonable place to put it, because number one, it's not, it's in the center of their own property, it's facing these courts, right?
It's facing the middle school.
The middle school. Some kind of recreational field or something.
You would, you would see it, you would see it more from Alton, if that enclosure was there, 'cause there's more houses, it's open space, as it runs along there.
Well, and I think, and I understand the complaint, I think, did come from Alton, so I thought, that's really the residential, you know?
And we've not heard from the Buxton, Laura, resident?
Um, no, we have not done a public hearing on it, because it's a pretty small site plan change, but you could, I, it would be unlikely that the Buxton people were really paying attention to the planning board agenda.
Right, they weren't proactively contacted.
I can go back to Verizon if you want, and-
Does the town still have part of that building?
So?
Yes.
Where the pumps?
The pump station is owned by the city of Skeneckity, and we have an easement joint ownership for the pump.
I thought I remembered it being complicated, and that impinged on the, uh, parking requirements.
That-
'Cause there had to be at least one space for the pump station.
Maybe, I don't know, I'd have to go back and look at the, I don't, I don't know how they calculated the parking back then.
I remember having that discussion, let me put it that way.
Okay.
Don't remember the conclusion, but I remember having a discussion, and one time we were looking at.
'Cause like-
We had standby parking.
Right, as long as he's not changing the parking, Clark and I don't even do a parking analysis, as long as they're not changing the parking.
So, I think the solution to your parking, Laura, is that where that bend was, if there, that, that parking lot isn't striped, that spot isn't striped, then if we striped the one close to where the current proposed location is gonna be-
Then you're not losing any of the existing parking.
And even if you striped it, I guess, you can unstrip it.
Yeah, so it's just, so-
But I would recommend then, based on that, that the current location you're proposing, if we go forward there, should at least stripe that one lot so that no cars are parked there any day, when the truck needs to come in.
Yeah, pulled up an aerial, are you there?
Yeah, that, so if you notice, I don't know when this aerial from, that isn't where they're-
It's, it's old.
Can you just speak?
Oh, sorry, yeah, I'm sorry. Is that?
Yeah, as you mount.
It's right up there?
It's showing the garbage right here.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
So, it's not really at that, somebody else was saying it was at the crook, right?
It's probably about where it's supposed to be, the crook is down here, I'd say that's where it was approved, is the same as the aerial, maybe a little farther north.
The other thing is, it's kinda near the walkway to the playground was the only other thing, but that's fine. I will put it wherever you want.
I think we can be okay with where it is, let's just make sure the parking is adequate, that they could stripe that one out. I don't think we can always rely on that there'll always be a six AM pickup, right? I think you, you wanna ensure that there's always-
Okay.
Hey, it helps you, right? You don't want them to not pick your garbage up one day.
Right.
You can tell them when to come pick it up, they don't tell you?
You can give them a range, I mean, you can't say, pick it up at six AM, but you can tell them they need to pick it up before nine AM when there's people-
Where do you clear snow on this lot, too?
Oh, it goes different places on the property.
So, now you have to keep that one clear, right, which is another reason to have a hatched parking spot.
Well, it's kind of, where we're talking about right now by Buxton is where we did put snow, but now we'll be able to put more snow over where it is now, you know what I'm saying?
Sort of swapping the snow removal area with the dumpster enclosure?
Right.
Although you got your walkway to the playground there.
Hmm?
Although you have your walkway to the playground there.
Right.
Excuse me.
Well, no, but that area to the, the section over, we have places to put the snow.
I think from a planning perspective, if that spot gets marked as being not a spot-
The Buck, right close to Buxton, yeah.
Yeah, the one, I think.
It may not have even been counted as a spot on that old drawing too, if you look, it's not actually, it doesn't look like it's full-size on here.
Mm-hmm.
But-
Okay.
Okay.
Well, we've got a, we've got a better plan, um, all the information's here that we've requested from the applicant, so I think the, we'll, we'll double-check the parking requirement, so if that one can be swapped with the other one, or change, i- if it's a one-to-one, that's easy, if you end up sacrificing one space at the end, then that's fine under the calculation. I think we also have the ability to do a waiver on parking, um, especially when it's very minimal, so that's another option that we can explore as well. Um, I personally think that the, the end location is better with landscaping around it, uh, it takes it away from, uh, we'll call it where that bend is, and you can, you can see that there from Alton, even though there's some trees and the playground, your playground that's there, it is visible from there.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and we'll update the, I wonder if maybe some of the confusion for the size is that the agenda still says six by eight, so we'll make sure that that gets updated too, so it's clear, yeah.
All right. Any other comments? Good. All right.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Where does this, oh, here we go. Thank you, again, sorry.
Okay.
Have a good night.
Okay. Okay, that wraps up discussion items, uh, moving on to reports. Ms. Robertson?
Yeah, so thirty-four oh-six Albany Street is, um, scheduled to go to the zoning board this month, December seventeenth? Yes, December seventeenth, and, um, is also has, has a public hearing called for December eighteenth at the town board level, just moving forward on both, um, prongs. There has been some recent concern about, uh, precedent setting for the small size of the lot going to the zoning boards, um, and, um, was there any, was there anything else you wanted to add about that? I mean, I guess the-
They talked about, they talked about, like, community opposition, which there wasn't really thing, uh, anything more than like parking concerns, but I think parking's been addressed. Um, they did talk about a little bit on neighboring residential and community support for it, and then I believe that the review of the zoning, um, I guess, variances that they're going, going after have been reviewed, and they're relatively straightforward, so it's, it's, you know, there's just the building compliance issue, I think, which is a separate thing.
Right, so the, uh, denial for the zoning board was broken into two parts. Um, one was the, the construction of the accessory structure itself, which would never even come before the planning board, and then the other one was the use of the structure for a place of worship, which just, I know that it's sometimes confusing, but place of worship is allowed in a residential zone, it is not a use variance that they're requesting, it's just an area variance, but it's a large area variance, because places of worship in their traditional settings are two acres, so that's a big ask from the zoning board. Um, this, the Conservation Advisory Council did review it and, um, recommended a negative deck to the town board, they did wanna see it come back from site plan, um, one of their main things was, rather than grass text, text paver, they wanted to actually just keep it grass unless the, unless the, it started to get really muddy or something, because they think keeping it grass keeps it looking, uh, more residential and more natural, so that was their one thing that they had there.
Right. And there's quite a few conditions on that that will potentially eliminate, if that ever changes hands, it would be very difficult for somebody to use it other than a resident, it would revert back to a residential house.
That's the hope, yep, and it's a very unique, um, circumstance there, so.
Has anybody reviewed this in terms of the federal law on?
Ralupa?
Huh?
Ralupa?
That doesn't sound right, oh. I've got a note at home and I forgot to bring it.
Yeah, it's the Religious Land Use and Institutional Persons Act, um, so yeah, we did look at it, and the issue with Ralupa is that you can't use zoning proactively to keep out religious entities, so, but the corollary to that is, when you have legitimate planning and zoning issues, you're not precluded from raising them, but you need to solve them in the least restrictive manner you can. So, for instance, I believe in this particular property, there were more than one way to calculate how many parking spots were needed, or some other things like that, so in that situation, the planning office, I would say- So in that situation, the planning office, I would say, properly decided to use the least restrictive, um, method to calculate what needed to be done there. So totally cognizant of it, um, and I think we're in full compliance of it. You know, it, it doesn't mean that we don't get to do nothing, but we have to be smart about how we solve issues, so.
Okay, that's reassuring.
Yeah, I think the other thing we talked about at economic committee meeting was putting together a fact sheet of, you know, what the use is so that, that the town board members understand, you know, what's going on that property. You don't have to read through a tome of information to try to dissect it. They were gonna break it down into, um, take the findings basically and streamline them a little bit so that people understood what it was. Would you thought be helpful?
Yeah, so I'll give you an, another update. I'll have another update on the twenty-second and let you know what happened. I was, I was hoping maybe we wouldn't have any items for the twenty-second, but we have a fair amount, so. Sorry for scheduling a meeting on the week of Christmas, but we had so many months where we had only one meeting that fell out that way.
Anything on some reports?
Nope, not for me.
Okay, great. Uh, commission business, so in our packet was a schedule for twenty-twenty-six. And anybody had a chance to take a look at that? But there are several months where we are going to just have one meeting in there for a number of reasons, whether it's Memorial Day or early voting or other holidays that are on there. So, um, you know, be cognizant of that. They did move the October meeting to the third Monday of the month as well, so that there would be a, a meeting in October. So take a look at that calendar.
I didn't see any conflicts.
Other conflicts or anything? If you, if you do, please let Lauren Clark know immediately.
Yeah, the Jewish holidays are on the weekends, like, I'm completely on the weekends in twenty-twenty-six.
So.
So unusual. We did avoid the school breaks and we did block out the early voting cuz we're anticipating that in June and November. I do think you could probably put two meetings in December, but we really usually do not like to schedule the same week of.
Even if we need to, we can.
But if we need to, we can, yeah. But right now, it's, um, it's got just one meeting in December.
All right, yeah, so everyone take a look at that and let them know before the end of the year. Open it up to the board for any commission business?
I, I just wanna go back to J-Dog for a moment. So in the back of my mind, I'm, I'm a little, you know, displeased with the fact that they have to just redo everything again. So a question, do we have what we recommended to the ZBA?
Yeah.
So is the ZBA agenda full on the seventeenth or can you get them on?
The problem is, um, the notification to neighbors went out on Friday.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's, there isn't any way to squeeze them on this.
All right, just, I, I, I would have been remiss if I didn't ask.
Yeah. I think, I think they're okay. I know she does wanna move it along.
Again, I definitely got that sense.
Yeah.
Again, uh, it, it's just that, yeah, it's just that this is all procedural, right? It's all procedural.
Well, and for a little while, everyone thought it was recorded. So, yeah, it was kind of a shock that it didn't actually go through.
It is, it is what it is.
Yeah.
Thank you. I just wanted clarification.
So I attended one of the Schaefer Home Committee meetings this past Thursday. And we had two guest speakers, David Gibson and Ken Rimney. So if you've been upstairs and looked around, Ken's got some photography that's here. And David had been recording some meetings with Paul in his later years and has been, um, like the stewards of Adirondack Wild Organization and have a lot of history on, you know, Paul himself. And we were explaining what the committee does and how they're cataloging everything. And we were hit with an incredible piece of information. So we collectively have thought that there's over a hundred homes in Niskiuna that Paul had either worked on, designed, or built. And the exact words were three hundred homes and two hundred renovations over the span of sixty years. There was, there, there was a huge collection of information of blueprints and things that have been dedicated and donated to the Kelly Adirondack Center. We're gonna schedule a time to go down there and take a look at it. There has been a lot of information that's been coming to the surface on the residential side that wasn't recently known before, just between outreach and people talking. So what we had originally thought of was collecting a database of, you know, several dozen homes in town, has now been expanded to when he was a drafts person, what he built, what he consulted on, um, interior projects that he did, which would range from a fireplace to a back porch, a railing in someone's house. I mean, it's really interesting, the outreach that he had and what he did with his building that then funded a lot of his conservation stuff. So it was a wonderful meeting, the, the two were extremely wonderful to talk with for the evening. It's incredible to take the wealth of knowledge that they had and then.
So, so the key thing, the source then of where we can get definitive information is Kelly Adirondack Center.
So that, there, they have a lot of information that they've been given over recent years. And this went back several years previously when I went there on my own to try to find archives and things like that. Information's been given to them recently in the form of blueprints and other things like that. So now that we have some of these direct links with people that knew Paul and know what our mission is of what the committee is doing, we're going to pull some of those resources and then get information, get that down and then, you know, start from the town level to.
I mean, I do know there's at least one nephew of Paul.
Well, yeah, we met him.
What's the first name? William? Bill or William?
I think so.
Yeah.
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 He used to be on the Niskiuna Committee.
Yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, what it, huge discovery.
Yeah, no, it's big. I mean, that could, I mean, Niskiuna can be a museum town.
Yeah, the three hundred and two hundred is everything he did, but a lot of it is really concentrated in what we call the Niskiuna Schenectady area. And after just talking with them and them rattling off neighborhoods and addresses and what they did, it was pretty impressive because now we're looking at what he did much differently because the style of home is not just what a lot of people think of when you're like behind Route Seven, behind the mobile station in those pocket neighborhoods where he really had a discerning style between the fifties and sixties. He did stuff from the late twenties all the way straight through. And, you know, Center Hall Colonial, Tudors, all that type of stuff.
Was that meeting by any chance recorded?
I don't think so. We don't have the screen up when we, when we do it.
I know he had a tremendous work ethic. And he had more than one project going at a time, from what he told me.
Yeah.
I didn't, I never got to know him very well, but I talked with him a few times.
You know, I mean, it's really cool. People in Niskiuna like love Paul Schaefer when they like their, they really love their Paul Schaefer Homes and stuff. Do you think those two guys, like, if we ever could do like a nighttime, you know, like, um, we had a forester from D E C come and talk to people about spongy moths? Like, I could set it up and do, you know, email blasts out there, like, if they ever wanted to come and do kind of what they did at the Schaefer Homes Committee for like a nighttime meeting?
Yeah, I think they would definitely be interested in doing that. They did offer to host one of the Schaefer Committee meetings at the Kelly Adirondack Center and do the tour.
That's cool.
So there's, if you've ever been there in.
I actually worked with Ken and Dave.
Oh, okay.
Years ago when it was, uh, the Association for the Protection of the Adirondacks.
Okay.
And to tap into their brains is amazing. And I actually worked in the Adirond, in the, in Paul Schaefer's house.
Okay.
And you gotta, you gotta go. It's a very cool house.
But yes, they'd be, I, I'm sure they'd be more than happy.
So, so in terms of, I'm looking at it from the perspective of now with the homeowners, right? So right now, whatever the hundred homers or so, they're registered. There's no burden on the homeowner, right?
There's no burden.
And so there'd be no.
Just pride.
It's just a database to recog.
Right.
The goal of this committee is to get local recognition.
Right, right.
That's all.
Right.
And that it's a, that it's a, it's an architectural and cultural resource. And then from there, that committee may evolve into something else. It may become an active committee that wants to take it to the next level to maybe get plaques made or something like that. But no, uh, no covenants or anything where you'd have to say, well, you have a slate roof, you better put one back.
Yeah, no, no, I, I mean, I recall that. I'm just, since it's come back live again and we're talking about the much more expanded count.
Yeah.
Did they mention how he would study the site before designing? Because it was a big thing, he wanted to take advantage of the light and.
Right, yeah.
It was like talking with an artist.
And, and one of the, we actually spoke about that for a while because I said, once I found out some of the stuff he did in the thirties, I would understand why a house might not be positioned perfectly perpendicular to the street and he might tweak one a little bit. Or if the landscape, there was a reason for it.
Well, yeah, it was an accident.
Exactly, so.
Never an accident.
And, and, and then the other interesting thing was how much work he turned away because people wouldn't either do something he thought was the right long-term move. Or it was, it was wonderful, so. But yes, we should have had our own little recording.
Yes, he had some choice words for people who messed with his designs too.
Yeah, the, yeah, the, um, we didn't have the, um, our LinkedIn or our thing wasn't up and running, so. Yes, it was, it was good. So again, if you guys are on, go to any board meetings or anything, feel free to report back.
It's amazing, it's twenty-twenty-five and you can still discover stuff about your history.
Oh, it's fantastic.
Yeah.
Great, okay. Any other commission business? Okay, uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Ms. Drang.
Second.
Second by Mr. Khan. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.[1791.81]